I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. So the next item on the agenda would be approval of minutes. Robert's rules essentially says that we can approve the minutes by consent because the only reason why you'd vote no on the minutes is if you want to change them. So are there any changes or corrections to the minutes of July 13th, July 31st, or August 7th that anyone wishes to propose? Ms. Caluci?
Well, I just wanted to make a comment about something in the July 10 minutes, which where the statement on page five that it's a, I think it's a misrepresentation to say that at the board's request, the practice of providing the Board of Ed with a staffing information was discontinued. That was brought up last time. And I don't see why it should be in the minutes unless there's a source for that. I don't know if it's...
Well, that was said at the meeting, was it not? I mean, it may not be correct.
Well, it was said that we had requested to discontinue, and I don't recall the board ever requesting to discontinue.
I don't think the board ever did request it. It was discontinued, but I don't think it was at a board request. I think it just happened.
So I think that needs to be either have a footnote or something.
A board member did request it, and no one else.
But it says the board's request.
It was never acted on by the board, so I think Ms. Caluci is correct. But that's, it's not correct to say that the board requested that they be discontinued. So let's edit that, okay? Is that okay with everybody, consents?
Yes.
All right. And with that correction, we'll accept the minutes as submitted. So the next thing would be public comment, correct? You got a sign-in sheet?
I just left it for you, Dr. St.
Where'd it go?
For you.
Oh, all right. Mr. Flores?
Good afternoon. I was here, I got a letter from the, not from the school, because it was not a school envelope. It was from one of the principals on the middle school. I think it was like two weeks ago. It was like a, it was more like, not a school letter, it was more like a personal letter.
Can you identify yourself?
Oh, my name is Moses Flores from Willimette. It was more like a personal letter. It was not like a, for the school letter. She wrote the letter in pen and sent it to my house saying to me she wanted to meet with my daughter before she goes to the school. Because I know she got in trouble last year, and it was like a big thing. But, and she did that, I hope she sent a letter to all the other students to the school because...
Who is the she?
Ah, the principal, I don't know. But the letters in my house, I just came straight from work.
Principal of your daughter's school?
Yes. But she wrote, it was like a, not like a, through the school, it was through her personally. You know? And, and she's like already back again picking my, on my daughter again. I'm not going, this is not going to happen again. Because last year was the, it was like a debacle last year with her. And they, I already called our attorney, they explained to them, they said, go to the meeting and find out what's going on first. Because I'm not going to go through that, same thing I went last year with the principal. I'm not doing this again.
Well, it's, at this point, it's not a board-level issue, it's an issue to take up with the principal. If that doesn't work, call the superintendent's office.
Well, that's the same thing I always hear. You, we come here, you say, you guys, you say, personally, you always say, go to the superintendent. You call the superintendent, superintendent, go, go to the board. You, it's like, bonds here, bonds over there. I say, you guys, that's the reason you guys got a board, to make decisions. You guys are there, you guys work for us. That's why it is, you guys work for us.
Well, we've, we've, we've got the comment, thank you, and...
Oh, you're stopping me to talk, that's why. You work for us, for the system. It's not, it's not, what are you going to do, wipe it, the same thing on the rock and see you later? That's what you guys always do. That's why we have all these problems with the school system. That's why we lose good teachers, good teachers, we lose them. Why? Because of administration, not because the administration.
Thank you. All right. And one other person who put their name down and then scratched it off. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak? Public comment? No? Okay. If not, we'll move on to the superintendent's report. An update on the opening of schools and...
Sure, thank you, Dr. Murphy.
Can you get the microphone over because we need to make sure that people tuning in at home can actually hear what you say?
Thank you. This is always an exciting time of the year. The beginning of school is always an exciting time to see that teachers are coming back, getting their classroom readies, and students are coming. My favorite students would be the kindergartens that are coming for the first time. So I know that we'll be cleaning a lot of nose and lots of cries, tears. But we are excited about our students coming to school, particularly kindergarten. So we have been pretty busy this week, and, you know, since school closed, we've been pretty busy getting ready for the opening of schools. So just want to highlight a couple of things. We had a leadership institute at the end of June, and we also have in our operational institute, where administrators are learning new things about how to become better school leaders. We all are in this business to learn to be, to do our job better. And so improvement and growth mindset is what we have in our public school. And the administrators are working very hard, learning how to become better principals, better superintendent, better administrators in both, in instruction and also leading the operation of the school. Those couple items for your, for your interest, facilities. Mrs. Don Demakos and our entire team is working very hard, getting facilities ready, getting all the building. Then you will see that this team does a good job getting our schools ready. Open house, you do have a list of the open house that will take place, so I will not go through them. But they are in your pack. Welcome to go to open house, to attend open house in the school. A tradition here, and one that is very successful, and is the barbecue for the opening of school that will take place on the 23rd here at the high school, starting at 4:30. And parents are welcome, and we do have lots of parents that come, lots of staff. And your family is welcome, your son, your daughter, your nieces. This is a family event, and we love to have you. Orientation for sixth and ninth grade students will take place also. So you have the time there on August 23rd, and we welcome all parents. Convocation, so you can see the very busy, busy week. Convocation will take place on the 23rd, also starting at 8 o'clock, and that's when we welcome everyone back. New teacher orientation, the 20th and the 21st. I just want to tell parents that the bus schedule will be on the Chronicle and Saturday, the 24th. And something new that the middle school team, administrative team is doing this year, and I want to congratulate them. The middle school team this year, and I know that one of the assistant principals already started contacting parents and students to visit them and welcome them to the new school year, and to ask them what kind of support they need. So I know that some letters went out from the high, middle school administrator contacting parents. It does a visit before schools start. Some school district do this very well, to welcome students to the school and to welcome parents and to ask them for their support. So those are a couple of the opening of schools. Staff reporting. Again, this is a critical time of staffing, not only in Wyndham Public School, but in our school district across the country. As of today, I believe we still have 15 vacancies to fill. And I do have a, Dr. Caluci has some question. And the staffing appointment and resignation, Dr. Caluci, I do have them. We used to do this before, so we went back to do this again. So here are the staffing lists and...
Is that the same as the one that was emailed?
Yeah, but I will send it to you again, in case you have, if you don't have it. And I do have, so far, we have 15 vacancies still that need to be filled. So I do have that for you also. The human resources department is working diligently, and now the administrative team is working very...
Teach for America?
We don't have any this year for Teach for America. And the reason why we don't have any from Teach for America is that Teach for America has decided that they're going to put all their effort in the larger urban district. So they have decided that they will work with larger urban district, Bridgeport and New Haven. So we don't have any this year for Teach for America.
I also asked about the sort of total numbers of...
I do have it. You want it now, I can give it to you later, I do have it.
Oh, well, when were you going to?
Yeah, I do have it here. So if we have the opportunity to have an executive session, I will go over with you since I will be calling. You want one, Mrs., you want another, you want one? Thank you, thank you. Since I will be, we're looking at reassigning some position and making some adjustment, due to the budget constraint that we have, I really have to look very carefully at what are our needs versus what we want in order to achieve our mission and our vision. So we've been discussing the function of the school district, the areas of focus of the school district, where do we need the support to improve in the areas that we want to improve. So definitely what we see is that everyone will be taking on some new tasks. We will not be able to fill some other position. So I will want to discuss that with the board if we have an executive session, because I will be talking... Town, we just received some info. I have the numbers from the town. We're hoping that, we still need some more numbers from the town, by the way. Rita, right? Rita, we still need, right. So we're still waiting for a set of numbers from the town. As soon as they give us those last set of number, we should be finished. But I do want to make sure that people understand that we just received some numbers today, we're waiting for some other numbers. And I know that the town is also working diligently to get those numbers to us. And as soon as the town get those numbers to us, we'll be able to close. We love good news, and so today is a night of good news. We're going to talk about our SAT scores. Our S-Back scores are not officially out. We, the state have not released them, so as soon as the state release them, we will officially release them to the public. But our SAT scores have been released, and I want to congratulate the high school administrative team, particularly the high school math department. Anybody from the math department here? No? Well, we congratulate them again, and the high school, Mrs. Pam Cavanagh is here, and I thought I saw Dr. Morales here. No? Oh, Mrs. Cavanagh and her team, and Mrs. Youngberg, and Mr. Neil Weathers, and everyone that worked to improve our test scores, SAT scores. So I want to give Mr. Weathers the opportunity to present to the board the improvement that we signed the SAT scores at the high school. And when the S-Back comes out, you will see also the improvement that took place on the S-Back scores.
Good evening. So we're going to just talk about the SAT scores from SAT Day. This was the fourth year that Wyndham High School took part of the statewide SAT Day. Thank you very much, Chris. And it actually is now like three different days. There's two makeup days associated with it. So I'll get right to the numbers here. So the first way we're going to look at this is over four-year history of the students making benchmark. And what that means is, for a student to meet benchmark in Connecticut, they need in evidence-based reading and writing, which is like the ELA portion of the SAT, they need a score of 480 or better. If you've taken the SATs, as in the past, the scores go from a scale of 200, the lowest score to 800 in a given subject. So if you get a score of 480 or better, you are meeting benchmark. And in mathematics, that benchmark score is a 530. So I compared with Connecticut, and just so the board knows, I know later on in the year, we have a retreat. Usually I'll do a deeper dive with comparing to Alliance and waiting against our Derg. But the results were just released several days ago. But we wanted to make sure that you were able to see these results as soon as possible at a meeting. You could see, when you're looking at meeting benchmark, which is a yes or no question, did a student get a certain score, you could see in our ELA from last year, we're like about a point higher but running flat. You can see, though, in mathematics, we went from 10.6% to 17.7%, which is over a 7% increase, which is significant after three years of running relatively flat. You can also see, I always like to include Connecticut. You could see in ELA, Connecticut over the four years has actually decreased by 3% of percent of students making meeting benchmark. And in mathematics, they've gone up close to 2%. And then average scale scores, what this is, is just the average score of the entire population. Now, and when we do Wyndham High School, one thing to keep in mind is, over the four years, the number of students that test is roughly between 100 to 120 students in a given year. One thing that Wyndham High School does well, and actually, as I'm looking at the principal, she had a really good effort to do this, is we're required to get 95% of our students to take this. Unlike the S-Back, which goes on for a couple of months, we only have three days to make sure that students show up. So kudos, because that goes in our accountability index. Schools that meet that 95% threshold. Now Connecticut, by comparison, obviously larger, has about 36,000 students roughly each year that have taken it. In 2017, 18, it was a little less due to a snowstorm that occurred on one of the testing days. So as you see, scale score, one thing to note when you look at the evidence-based reading and writing, in 2017, 18, the average scale score was 427. There was a 14, now this is different students, obviously, a 14-point scale score increase, which was considered to be a significant increase. So while the evidence-based reading and writing, the percent of students meeting benchmark didn't increase, it was flat, the actual average score of that population went up a significant amount, which could happen, which could mean students performing on the lower end of the score compared to their peers in a different cohort increased. Or at the other end as well, the higher performing students had higher scores than the top, like quartile per se. And then in mathematics, we have about a four scale score point increase. And that is really the summary. So obviously, we want our, the evidence-based reading and writing, the percent meeting benchmark to continue to increase and match the scale score increase. And in mathematics, we want to continue that work because we're at 17% and we want to close that gap with the state averages. And that's what I have. And we'll do more at the retreat, but I wanted to get these numbers out for the board to see.
Since they're officially out.
So if you have any questions?
Just want to congratulate the high school for the increase, and we'll continue to work with them and support them to move forward again.
On a personal note, and Principal Cavanagh knows this, like, I personally had the pleasure of working with the math department. I know they worked very hard on getting those scores up. And I know that, obviously, the English department also works hard, the school works very hard at getting those scores up.
Does he have any more?
No, I don't have any more, so we've got the committee reports.
So the next thing on the agenda is committee reports, and we did have a finance and audit meeting last week. And so I, since I chair that, I will report on it. Main item on the agenda was working on the closeout of this year's budget. And I would like to say that a week ago Tuesday, we had a meeting, Ms. Parsiac, Mr. Pablon, I, the town manager, town administrative assistant, and the town's accountant, or finance officer, I'm not exactly sure what her exact title is. But at any rate, I really appreciate the helpfulness of the town manager in working with us on getting the budget taken care of. The key thing here, and we absolutely agree with the town manager, that we want to get the town and the board's budgets closed without dipping into the uncommitted fund balance. And the reason that's important is to maintain, the town right now has a pretty satisfactory bond rating, and we have a number of projects that, to be bonded in the future. And so we want to hold on to the bond rating, and we don't want to risk it by dipping into the uncommitted reserve fund. And it looks like we're going to be able to do that. So as it said here in the, these minutes, we started out with a whole of about $900,000. Now, part of that is, if you took a look at the forensic report that was posted yesterday, you'll note that the budget was balanced last year by withdrawing $485,000 that had been deposited in one of our pension accounts. That's not really a good thing to do. And so that was taken out last year to balance the budget. The $485,000 was deposited out of this year's budget into the pension account in March, I believe, when the deposit was actually made. But the point is, it was taken out of this year's budget. We have a pension payment due to that account of $472,000. It is deferrable, but we don't want to defer it, because you really shouldn't be deferring. That's a classic way that private and public pension plans historically have gotten into trouble, is by deferring payments because they could, until someday when pensions have to be paid and you have to come up with the money, right? So we don't want to defer pensions. It turns out, however, that a few years ago, those of us who were on the board in, I think, 2015, we actually switched pensions from a plan that we'd had with Aetna that was basically a fixed plan that paid about 2% a year, to a plan with Morgan Stanley that's equity-based, that pays a higher amount. And all of the employees since we made that switch are on the Morgan Stanley account. And so we have no more employees being added to the Aetna account. The Aetna account has more, I got a statement today, this afternoon, in fact, at about 3 o'clock this afternoon. The Aetna account has almost $5 million in it, which turns out to be about $480,000 more than it needs to be to cover the pension obligation to those employees that remain under that pension plan. So basically, we can withdraw about $485,700 from the Aetna plan, less some service fees that would be charged by the plan contract, from the plan that's only paying us 2%, and transfer it to the Morgan Stanley plan that's paying more than 2% on average over time. And that would also cover the $472,000 payment that we owe. So that would reduce the budget deficit, the $900,000 by $472,000 right there, okay? Further, there was about $188,000 in charges to the Board of Education accounts for the move from Kramer, that's a town project. It was charged to the board's accounts. That wasn't authorized by the board, it wasn't authorized by the superintendent. It was, there was work done by people working for the Board of Education, that's how it got charged to our accounts, but it's really a town project. So the town manager agrees that the town ought to pay for that. But in, as a way of paying for that, it turns out that we have money in our capital appropriation fund for 2018, 19, that we haven't expended. There's about $163,000 in projects that we didn't carry out, that we can defer to the future and go back to the Board of Finance next year or the year after and ask that those be reapproved. So we can put $163,000 toward those expenses and help the town out a little. It turns out that the town has a modest surplus. And it also seems that we're actually going to pay less for healthcare than we had put in the account with Lofton to pay for healthcare. So we're going to have about $200,000 left over there. Now technically, that should go into the reserve fund. And the town's balance, if they have one, also should go in the reserve fund. And where does the reserve fund actually go? Well, the reserve fund, as you may know from reading the papers, is got a negative balance at the moment. And what a negative balance means is that, you know, who's that owed to? It's actually owed to the uncommitted fund balance, okay? So the town manager's proposal is to use the 600 or so from the town and the 200 or so from us, total of about $800,000, to make sure that both of our budgets clear and whatever remainder is there. And we haven't gotten all the receipts and everything yet, so they're, you know, we're talking, after we take the $163,000 from the unexpended capital and the $485,000 from the pension plans, we've got about $200,000 left that we haven't accounted for right now, but we're still waiting for more numbers to come in. It's $200,000, give or take. And the money that we're going to get back from Lofton is going to be $200,000, give or take. So essentially, we're going to be able to close the budget without a deficit. That's basically what the bottom line is. Okay, the other items on the finance and audit committee's budget had to do with budget transfers, which I've got, we've got a motion on the agenda later to cover budget transfers for the current 1920 budget. And we're going to ask for an update on the, ask the superintendent to prepare a line-by-line update of the budget that we had in March that we all voted for, that the Board of Finance is now reduced by, I think, $700 and some thousand dollars. And the superintendent has given us items that she is going to use to adjust those things. But when Ms. Parsiac gets finished closing the books and has time to do it, we'll do a line-by-line adjustment of that budget from March so that we can put it on the website and update the budget to what will actually get voted on when we vote in September. Okay? Okay, is there any questions about it, Ms. Lander?
Can you tell me what projects we're deferring from our capital improvement? Because that affects things that'll be discussed in my committee.
Yeah, so, so three things. Dan, please help me out here if I don't remember. A canopy that was done for Nert Wyndham, a canopy. Some padding for the middle school gym.
Which school?
The middle school gym.
Middle school.
Middle school gym and a cabinet for the Nert Wyndham library, some cabinets, yeah. So things like the bathroom at the middle school were not deferred. There are some things that are needed, so we're not deferring those.
And oil tanks haven't been...
Oil tanks have not been deferred. No, no, absolutely not.
Well, I'm going to need to speak to you at the end of this, because DEEP has given us a September deadline and we haven't started yet.
We submitted a letter to DEEP, you have it, yeah, for that extension. So no, that has not been deferred and middle school.
If I'm not mistaken, the oil tanks are on the agenda for next Wednesday's Board of Finance meeting for approval for the capital budget.
Two of them are. Two of them were approved last year.
Two of them was last year.
So we may not get the other two approved.
Right, well, and we have a deadline looming, so that's just something I've been keeping on my radar. Thank you.
Ms. Caluci?
I just want to say, I feel very uncomfortable with these figures. You know, hearing that there's funds here that can be moved over there. I mean, I feel like this is part of the problem we've been having, and the town, incidentally. I am still digesting the report from the forensic analysis. And, you know, while I might understand why some of this is being done, I have to say, it does not reassure me. And I do have, you know, I'm shocked that there is suddenly a pot of money that has appeared that is going to reconcile our books, because it sounds like that's what happens every year. And perhaps this is not, you know, the way to keep the books and keep the accounts. So I understand we are going to go forward with some new policies and procedures, but this kind of rosy picture kind of makes me think it's, how can this be real? And I do feel that it's using the unexpended capital improvements to do the move, which, from what I understand, should be on the town's side. Again, that's, it's just playing these games with the funds.
It's legitimately a town expense, but the town's going to help us out with our shortfall and make sure that money goes into the capital, into the reserve fund, which is something that the public has questioned. And so we're in a position where we can, you know, help the town out a little bit. I don't disagree with you at all about anything you just said. And I wouldn't call this a rosy picture at all. What I'm saying is that we will be able to close the budget. What I'm saying is that we will be able to close the books without a deficit, which is what the state statutes require. And since you opened that up, the Board of Finance has on their agenda for their meeting next Wednesday, a meeting with the forensic auditors and a discussion of the forensic audit in some detail. And they've invited Board of Ed and Town Council meeting, Town Council members as well as Board of Finance members to ask any questions about the auditor's presentation next Wednesday. I would urge members of the public who have questions about the forensic audit to attend that meeting. There are also, for those of us who've read it or are still reading it, at the end of the 30-some pages at the beginning, a number of recommendations, some of which have already been implemented. I believe we'll commit ourselves to implementing the rest of them as soon as we practically can. Ms. Aid, who is on vacation this week, which is why I'm chairing the meeting, has, was quoted in the paper yesterday as indicating that we plan to schedule some special meetings to undertake specific actions to address the issues that were raised in the forensic audit. And there are a number of things in there that indicate that, yeah, the books have not been kept in the most orderly way. And moving forward, we intend to address those issues and do things the way that they should be done. Mr. Doyle?
Dr. Mer, I'm taking this as an outline of possible solutions. I'm certainly not ready to endorse this as the way we're going to solve our budget problem. I have to agree with Mary. Once again, this is, we're doing this in the back of an envelope. We may have funds, and it's just about going to be $200,000, and it might be there about $163,000. It's just too vague. So, I'm taking this as, this is an outline of what was so far proposed. The other, because you haven't talked to the Town Council, they may not agree with using town, except the town manager says, let's use my surplus money to bail out the Board of Ed. That doesn't mean the Town Council's going to go along with that concept. I also have great concerns about, even though you're, I saw a quick note that we may have half a million dollars in Aetna money that we can switch over to Morgan Stanley, but again, that's exactly what we're in trouble for doing now. Maybe we shouldn't do it, maybe we should. So, I'm certainly not prepared to, and I didn't think we were prepared to endorse this as the solution to the budget.
There is no motion on this, as you've already noted, and it's true that although the town manager has said we can do this, he does have to get, and in order to move the capital fund money, we need to go to the Board of Finance and talk to them about it. So, yes, this is not a done deal. You know, since you served as the Finance Chair of the Board of Ed for a number of years, that if there is a deficit, it's the town's obligation to cover it. And so, the town manager and the Board of, and the Town Council can cover it any way they please. I would assume that the town manager's proposal is probably the most painless and logical way to get it done, but it's really up to them.
I was not at last week's meeting because I was on vacation. What is the deficit as of right now without any of these other measures?
It's on the order of $900,000. That's including the obligation to make the pension payment, that we could defer, but we don't want to.
No, we can't defer payments.
Yeah, we can.
No, no, I think...
Legally, we can, but it's a, it is not a, it is not a good practice.
It's not a policy that we should endorse.
Absolutely. I don't disagree with that at all. And it is serendipitous, I would have to say, that there is more money in the expiring pension accounts, and that account needs to meet its obligations, and it happens to be enough to cover this one year's obligation. In next year's budget, we need to make sure that we have the money to make the payment to the pension and that we don't spend it for something else, period. So, you know, we will, you know, the objective, though, is to get to the end of the month and file the report with the state that meets the statutory requirement. And I think that it looks like that if we cooperate with one another, that'll be possible. That's the gist of the report, really. Okay.
Except, the proposals for the capital is not on the Board of Finance's agenda for the end of the month.
That's the town manager's, he's the one that says he's taking care of that, so, I know. I understand.
Do we have to close this by a certain date? I mean, we have an audit to do and we have to have the books.
September 1st.
It's September 1st. Well, yes, it is September 1st, the paper where it has to be filed, but I believe you have another month to make adjustments afterwards.
No, September 1st.
I have to file with the state on September 1st.
I know, you do. But I read in the statute that it's possible to make amendments post.
September 1st, post September 1st, yeah. Yeah. You have post, five September 1st, you have 30 days after that.
Yeah, you have to file on September 1st, then you can, and corrections are possible. I'm, you know, this is...
Today's the 14th.
Yes, understood. That's, Ms. Parciak, Ms. Parciak has been working hard for us to make, I mean, it has not been easy getting this far, let me tell you. We owe her a great debt of gratitude.
We all do.
Okay, now, if we're ready to move on, Ms. Lambert, I know you've been on vacation, but do you have anything to add for school planning and design?
No, we didn't meet in June because Ms. Tomacos, did I say it right? Tomacos? Tomacos had just come on board, and she was catching up to speed and meeting with all of her staff, and now she's getting ready for school to open, so I think I'm going to defer it to the first week of September, as opposed to putting more on her plate, because she's also been helping the High School Renovation Committee with their minutes and agendas and information that they need and stuff like that. So, I don't want to put any more on her plate, I hope that's okay, before then. But something that I'm keeping, you know, on my radar definitely is the DEEP deadline that's coming up, and I'm hopeful that you'll keep me in the loop on that.
Yeah, I think Janet found the letter today, right? Janet, you found the letter today for DEEP? We found the letter today for DEEP, and I called them already, so, and Dan has been in conversation with him, so we're on top of it.
Well, if you guys could keep me in the loop, I would be grateful for that.
I will send you a copy of the letter when we send it out.
Yep, and then I'll meet with Ms. Tomacos before school start, well, right after school starts, I won't do anything before, and then she can, you know, give me an update on then the committee on what's been going on in our buildings and concerns that we have, because I want to make sure that while deferring things if we can, or, you know, putting them off the capital improvement is important, we have things like leaky roofs and oil tanks and stuff that we need to make sure stay on our radar and do.
Those are not, those are not being touched whatsoever. The roof of the middle, the roof of Wyndham Center, the roof at Nert Wyndham.
Those are in this year's budget, we're talking about stuff from last year's.
We haven't touched those.
And then, I'm anxious to hear about the pool tonight, so.
We have the, we have the important gentleman from the pool here tonight.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to add that I did miss the last High School Building Committee meeting because I was out of town, but it is of concern to get previous projects closed out, so, you know, I'm not sure how to address that.
And if I may answer that question, I suggested a strategy to Mr. Callahan to get, by the way, that's a town function also, so it's not, it's a district, it's a town function, not a school-district function, although the superintendent have to sign up. So, when there was difficulty getting Berrows closed, the town did hire someone to help out to get it closed. So, I, Mr. Callahan and I spoke about a suggestion, and I think tonight we can continue to discuss it, but I think, I spoke to the town manager and I spoke to Mr. Callahan about a suggestion, and I think there is something in place to get those projects closed out. That mean, went out and looking for some help outside of the town to get it closed.
Ms. Ray, has the Policy Committee met since our last meeting?
No, we have not met. We were meeting...
She was on vacation, too. She was on vacation.
Yes, I was on vacation. We'll be meeting on the 29th, and we have some work to do. We have some policies to work on implementing as recommended through the forensic analysis, so.
Okay.
Getting ready.
May I ask a question?
Sure.
Is one of those rescinding a previous policy that we've recently approved?
Changing it, making changes to it, yes.
I want to make sure that stays on our radar through you, obviously, but it stays on our radar, so that way we make sure...
It's the first item on the agenda.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
The Executive Committee has not met, although the Board itself has met an executive session twice to make sure that we got the forensic analysis done and out, so, that's, and I expect that we will have at least one Executive Committee meeting before the Board retreat on the 17th of September. Okay?
Okay.
Let's see. So, that's committee reports. So, our last meeting, it was proposed that we, that we plan a budget forum to talk to the public about our operating budget for 1920 and its status, and where we're at, and I see proposed dates here.
There are two dates. So, yeah, there are two dates that were suggested, one is September 10 and one is September 17 for this community forum, so it's up to the Board if they have any preference for any one of these two dates. We appreciate if you could let us know either tonight, or if you could let Janet know as soon as possible, that way we could coordinate when this is...
17th would overlap with our...
17th, I don't know what it is.
17th is a Tuesday.
Well, that's, okay, so what's the, what's the date of the, I'm sorry, I got the wrong date for our budget, our retreat. That's the, that's that week.
The 13th and 14th?
13th and 14th.
Okay, so it's before that, all right.
So, so the Board...
The referendum's on the 24th?
24th. So, the Board can let us know what the, if you could send us an email when you're available, what day you prefer, or if you want to do it right now, I don't know.
I think the 17th is the week before, that would probably be the most relative...
I think, yeah, I mean, the closer we, the closer we get to the date, the more people are likely to remember that...
There's a referendum coming.
Yeah, that they've got the information, they've got a referendum, we'll vote on the next Tuesday following, sure. Okay?
Okay.
So, if, no one else? Let's try and go for the 17th.
The High School renovation.
Okay, yes, the next item on the agenda is the High School renovation.
Project?
You want to take that? I see Mr. Callahan is here.
Mr. Callahan is here, Mr. Roach is here, and also Mr. Pellman is here. Mr. Callahan is the Chair of the High School Renovation Building Committee, and as you know, we are going to the State on August 21st to present to the State, so he's here tonight to give the Board an update on the status of the High School renovation project. Thank you, Mr. Callahan.
Thank you. Is that sufficient? Okay. So, tonight, as Dr. Garcia said, I'm just here to give a very high-level update and status of the work that the Building Committee's been doing. Just really three very broad steps. I want to spend just a minute on what we've done to date. I'd also like to hand out the budget that we have worked on. It has a couple of very high-level statistics regarding the scope of the project, and then right after that, I'd like to outline, again, very briefly, what our next steps are. So, I'd like to say, the Building Committee with its team, both Colliers and Fryer, the architect, have made excellent progress since we met with this Board last time. I believe we have a sensible plan right now in front of us that meets the educational specification that we've, were presented by the administration and the Board of Education. So, with that as a beginning, as part of this conversation, I'm going to step back and just outline what those steps were that got us to that point. I think you all recall, the Building Committee was put together by the Town Council some time ago. We hired a design team as well as a construction management team. We also have a construction manager on board at this point. We have a number of other consultants, surveyors, environmental hazardous material consultants. So, we have our, essentially, our team put together. That team has worked very well with the Building Committee to develop a understanding of what the educational specifications are and how they'll translate into a program. So, the architect worked very diligently to put together a program that essentially takes the written descriptions of the educational needs and translates it into space within the building. That program is a tabular summary of functions and areas. After that is done, the architect then works very closely with his team, the project manager as well as the construction manager, to arrange the space to align with the educational specification. After that is done, the, that floor plan is then given to, or has been given to, the construction manager for pricing. And I have the results of that tonight, and I'm going to hand that out. And before, you know, I answer questions relative to that, I'd like to just spend a very brief minute reviewing why it's structured the way it is, and then I'll talk about opportunities for us to fill in details and provide other information, not only to the Board but for the community at large. So, as just an overview, the first thing I'd like to do is present square footage information so that the Board, as well as these discussions continue, the community at large will have an understanding of, basically, where we're starting and where we're headed. I should say, just for the benefit of people who may or may not have been keeping close track, that one of the charges of the Building Committee were to integrate three programs into the high school facility. So, I want to reiterate to everybody that this program as presented today, and we're anticipating moving forward in, if not in exact form, something similar, includes space for the high school, it includes space for the early childhood center, and it includes space for the administration offices. So, if you start on the first, the top block of the handout, is a comparison of the existing space to the proposed floor area. So, nominally, the building, the existing high school footprint is approximately 241,000 square feet. We are proposing approximately 18,000 square feet of addition for a total footprint of about 260,000. So, at the highest level, you can see that we're adding just a small amount of footprint to accommodate those three additional functions. It might be argued that we really didn't need to add space, and I wouldn't necessarily take exception to that, but from a program and an efficiency standpoint, we felt we could justify adding those small additions to accommodate the program elements. Those were primarily, or the additions were primarily driven by our desire to keep the early childhood center functions in one area, and as a result of that, it required a small addition associated with the early childhood. And then, to accommodate, again, sort of geographic location, we wanted the administration offices to be in a segregated, separate area to allow the high school and the early childhood and the public to have their own entrances to those functions. So, we've added, as I mentioned here, a small amount of additions. The next block on the handout, hopefully will give you an idea of the allocation of the space. And it's important, at least from a budgeting standpoint, to keep in mind that the architect typically tracks net area when they're looking at program functions. So, it's important to know what's on the inside space so that we can have the appropriate number of, the amount of space for desks and chairs and other items. So, the architect typically will track net area, whereas the constructor or the contractor will track gross area. So, there's, again, it's probably not an important distinction, but I did want to make it clear that we're tracking both of those. So, if we look at net area, the high school, in its final plan, will encompass about 162,000 square feet. The early childhood center will encompass approximately 49,000 square feet, and the administration office is about 13,000. And the column to the right of that indicates the relative percentages. So, just, again, at the... So, just, again, at the high level, about seventy-two percent of the project will be allocated to the high school. About twenty-two percent will be allocated to the early childhood function, and new administration, approximately six percent, based on net area. And those percentages don't change significantly if you look at it from a gross area standpoint. And then, probably the most important element at this stage, because we're early on and, obviously, everybody's concerned about budgeting and cost, I've provided a summary, again, to help everybody understand how the project is being put together. And again, two columns here, one of them is if we open, go to what we call open bid versus a project labor agreement. There is a significant amount of difference between those costs, and I felt very strongly it was important to have those two costs revealed early on so people have a good understanding of the differences between those two construction approaches. So, again, using the open bid cost, just again, to illustrate what's included in the project. The site work and the athletic fields, at this stage, we have a budget of about thirteen million dollars. The additions, about eight million. The renovations for all three functions, approximately seventy-six million. And then, the next item is an escalator. This project will be completed over a number, a course of a number of years, and the contractors will escalate their prices to accommodate that. So, the construction subtotal under the open bid is about a hundred million dollars. Additional benefits associated with this project is, we will be including what is commonly referred to as fixtures, furniture, and equipment. So, once the building is renovated, the elements that support the educational function associated with the project's desks, chairs, bookcases, cabinetry, elements that are important to the function of those spaces would be covered under that line item, fixtures, furnishings, and equipment. That also includes things like IT and audio/video equipment, things that essentially go into non-building elements that are essential to the functioning of the program. You add fees for the construction manager, the, the architect, the program manager, other fees associated with the project, expenses such as permitting, reproduction costs, and then we have a, approximately a ten percent contingency. So, when you add the contingency to the construction and fixture number, we're at a hundred and twenty-four, a hundred and twenty-three, about a hundred and twenty-four million dollars. Again, I'd like to draw your attention to the percentage columns. About thirteen percent of this project will go toward the athletic fields and site work. About eight percent will go to additions. Most of the money for construction is related to the actual renovations. So, about seventy-five percent of this budget will go into improving the, the building itself. And then, the two-point-nine percent is a, an escalator. So, you can see the, the project, I, I've broken it up from a couple of different perspectives. So, folks who might occupy the building, as either teachers or administrator, will have some sense of how much of this project is going to go toward their endeavors. I've broken it up into dollar values so that the community will get an idea of the value that we're returning to the community. So, that's, that's, that's where we are today. I know going forward, there'll be lots of questions, both by teachers, administrators, Board of Ed, Town Council, Board of Finance, and the community at large. And from my perspective, that's going to be an interesting and challenging time for all of us, I'm looking forward to that. However, prior to fully embracing that conversation and discussion, it's, it's essential that we all remember that our next step is we are meeting with the state of Connecticut next week to review the preliminary plan that I've just outlined. We are hoping at that time to get the state to endorse what we're doing, to give us some feedback as to how to improve that program, refine it, and maybe, most importantly, at that point, to get some sense of what our reimbursement from the state would be. I would like to remind everybody here, as well as the public, these numbers are, are initial. They can and most likely will be fine-tuned as soon as we meet with the state of Connecticut and have an opportunity to meet with the Town Council and the Board of Ed and the Board of Finance. We will clearly outline what the implications are to the community. We will outline what impacts it will have in terms of taxes. We will obviously make a recommendation of, of bonding relative to this project. We were also hoping at that point to have some sense from the state what their willingness is to support this project. So, immediately after we get the big picture with the state's contribution together, it would be my expectation that the building committee would have a, a number of public presentations. We will continue our detailed work with the school administration and the teachers. We've had, the architect has spent hours with staff and administration developing an understanding of what their program requirements are, and we will continue to do that. So, I'm here, as I said in the very beginning, basically as an update and status, and I'm happy to answer any questions. And as detailed requests come in, I will work with our team to make sure that we have answers to your questions, so.
Mark?
All right, Michael, thank you for coming and giving this presentation, and I'm very sympathetic to the work and the hard work that's gone into this building committee so far. But I'm looking at the city, the state, the town voted for a hundred and twelve million. The state said, what are you nuts, we're only going to give you seventy-eight million, and we've come up with a hundred and twenty-four million. At what point do we say, thank you for the hard work, end this committee, and relook at this project as, as something that actually would, would work? Because I think we're just going way, I, I know you were hoping to go to the state and ask them how much are they willing to do, but you're suggesting that they come up with forty million dollars more than they did before, and, and the town come up with an additional twelve million dollars, just if, if this initial brush stays, stays similar. So, I, I don't want to be, I don't want to recreate the, the wheel here, but I wonder, when, when do we say, good night, and thanks for, thanks for the work?
That's, that's yours or the town's prerogative, you can do that at any time. But, Mark, that's a great question, and my answer to that is, we have an ed spec, and we believe that the, the costs that were presented here represent the cost of that ed, ed spec. I would like to make it very clear, there, the, the numbers represent a renovate like new, which is a minimum standard from the state of Connecticut. There, there really is nothing, if this were a new building, if we were starting from a clean sheet of paper, and you were to ask that question of me now, I would, I would have a lot of backstepping to do because we would have had a lot of choices to make to come to this number. We had very few choices to make coming to this number. It was really a matter of looking at the square footage, looking at what needed to be done, and assigning a cost to it. And maybe I should have said, and I'll say it now, the, and I'll, the architect and the construction manager will endorse this. The actual unit prices associated with this project are right in line with what construction costs are. It's not like we started with a budget and decided to build a sixty thousand or a hundred thousand square foot building. We had a hundred and twenty-five thousand.
I, I, I would agree, the committee has done an exceptional job in meeting the specs that, that we've been you. My suggestion is that we or the board did not realize what we were asking. And, and maybe we need to relook at the question that we asked to begin with, that maybe because of all the work that you've done to get to this point, we now realize, maybe we would realize that this was not the road to go, that we had a different option. I'm just, it just is spinning, if you, and you could ask just one other factual question for me.
Sure.
I'm looking at the high school square footage of one sixty-two. My understanding was the high school's going to be just on the second floor. So, is that additional, that's a significant amount of extra square footage, is that gym, pool, and athletic field?
Yeah, that, yeah, maybe, we have to make one thing very clear. One of the challenges that the state made clear to us in the very beginning is, this building is way too big for the number of students. And I understand, I understand that, I understand why they say that. But that, that comment is really meant to say, if you're going to start from scratch, here's the size of a building you should have. Well, this building was built forty years ago for a population that was almost twice, maybe not quite twice as large, but maybe, maybe twice as large. The building footprint is the building footprint. So, what goes along with the hundred and sixty-two thousand is, in fact, the gymnasium, the auxiliary gym, the pool, the auditorium, the, the, the nice cafeteria, and the, and even, and Scott will reinforce this, the quarter width in this building is, what, twenty-five percent greater than what they would allow now? So, we have lots of this space that is already here that goes into that. So, so, just stepping back to answer your question about, is this the right approach? I, I would hope we would have that conversation, and, and I would hope, once we get some sense from the state, we would be, the building committee would be in a better position to advise you, is, is there an alternative, is there an option? I, I suspect, based on the work that we've done, there's not much we can do other than accept the cost and move forward. And, and again, it sounds defeatist, and I don't, I don't want to suggest that, but it's hard for me to say to you tonight, in good faith, that there are large elements of this project that we can fine-tune or adjust and, and realize substantial savings. I, I just don't see that. And that's, quite frankly, is the reason I'm here tonight, because I want that conversation, or not, it's not that I want, I think it's important that that conversation starts, and everybody's informed about what this undertaking is. And, and I'm hoping, with some, you know, careful and thoughtful presentations and, and discussions, that people come to understand why it's, the cost is what it is, and I'm hoping, more importantly, they embrace it because the school clearly needs to be renovated.
Mr. DeSantis?
Yep. Right on, I'm right with Mark on that, and I agree that the school clearly needs to be renovated. And if I'm reading this right, you gave us the lower-end numbers. Historically, this town, when they do projects, they, they would go with the PLA, which is going to not cost a hundred and twenty-four million, it's going to cost a hundred and forty million. So, I mean, it, it's, like, I agree, the school needs to be renovated, but there is no way this town can afford a hundred and forty million dollars. Can't happen. Nobody can afford it.
Ms. Lambert?
I just, I want to just pick up a little bit on what you said, Mike, if I may, that in the initial ed specs that we submitted to the state, not only was some of the programming not there that has come out of the ed specs, but there was little to no athletic field and site work included in that plan, and that's a good portion of the jump that we've looked at. And in order to renovate the school, we have to make athletic fields handicap accessible, our bleachers currently are not, our concession stand bathrooms are not, getting out to the outer fields doesn't always have a way for someone who's differently able to get out to those outer fields. So, that's thirteen million dollars right off the very top, and Michelle Dixon from DAS said that right from the very beginning, that, you know, you didn't really look at the fields, and we basically looked at the envelope of the building when we submitted that first proposal. So, that's where thirteen million of it comes to, and it's not fair that a parent who's differently able can't get out to the far soccer field to see their child play, so those are real improvements that we need to make, and that's going to include some grading and some big purchases of equipment and stuff like that, that we didn't have in the initial budget, so that's where thirteen million of it. I'm not trying to excuse what the number is, including with the PLA, but I'm just trying to help explain a little bit more of it. When Michelle looked at the initial application, she says, you don't have anything here for athletic fields, and that was a big chunk of what we had to go back and take a look at. I hope you don't mind me dovetailing that.
No, no, that's fine.
Thank you.
Okay, in my view, I think we're going to have to go back to the drawing board. I'm going to start with Mike, and, and, Mark, and I don't think, there is no way that the town is going to approve this. It's a bit unrealistic, and, I don't know, I think we should, let's see what the state says, you know, and then we'll know more. But given these numbers, I don't see it happening.
Ms. Calucci?
Well, I just want to say, the town did approve a hundred and twelve thousand, uh, million. So, that, our, a big problem is having had that cut, which was not what was voted on. So, you know, if we had gone somewhat over a hundred and twelve million, that, that would be a conversation. But now, it looks like people have some unrealistic idea that having three programs in here, and, and by the way, where are you going to put central office, where are you going to put early childhood? I don't know if those things should be moved or done somewhere else with a different reimbursement, but they're going to have, those will eventually need to be done, too.
So, Ms. Lambert, if I'm correct, we started this process eight years ago?
Two thousand and twelve.
Okay, seven years ago.
Almost eight, but yes, seven years ago.
Seven years ago. So, it's not like we haven't thought about alternatives. And I, I don't have about economics and inflation to know that if we don't do this, in the end, it's going to cost us more than a hundred and forty million dollars. This, this is a fifty-year-old building. We're going to have to do something about the high school, we can't keep running the high school that we want to run in a building that exceeds fifty years old and keeps running. And this building has got maintenance issues, it's got a heating system that the parts are no longer made for, you know? So, stuff is being held together by baling wire and duct tape.
Full system that you can't get parts for anymore, too.
Yes, I know, there's a whole lot of things that are just going to get worse and more expensive to operate. And, and in the end, building costs and other inflation, it's just going to make it more expen, you know? We still have to deal with early childhood, we still have to deal with the Board of Ed offices, we still have to deal with the high school. If we stop and rethink, however we do it, one combined building, three separate buildings, it's going to take more time and more money than we're talking about right here and now. Now, the difference between open bid and PLA, that's not our call, that's the town council's call, and that's worth arguing about, I think. You know, what's the benefit of, I mean, PLA is not without its arguments, but it's not, it's not, that's not up to us. But, and then the question of, okay, can you afford it? This is not an expense, this is an investment. It's an investment that we're going to live with for probably twenty-five years, forty years, or fifty years. It's different than an expense, we're not burning the money. We're putting it into our children, we're putting it into the quality education in this town, we're putting it into our property values. Okay, Ms. Ray, you haven't spoken yet.
Okay, so when did you say you're going to the state, the twenty-first?
The twenty-first, which is next Wednesday.
Okay, so I say we wait until we see what the state says, because like Ms. Calucci said, the town has already voted for a hundred and twelve million, so hopefully, the state will give us close to what they said they would. You know, all, that's all we could do is hope and pray. I don't understand what else we can do right now, because we do need to renovate, we do need to have places for the high school, the early childhood, and our administrative offices. So, that's, if we say, let's wait more time, it's going to be probably double this amount. So, we have no choice but to just wait and see.
Mr. DeSantis?
Okay, so, I agree, we need to renovate. I need, things need to be done. However, it's, it's not going to double, we may, and also, we have to look at other issues that, when the town voted on this, the town, we were, the town was in a different mindset, and they thought that our checkbook was a little thicker than what it is. Now, the town's thinking a little different. Appar, I'm not speaking as a board member now, I was a parent. My chuff, second-grade child is going to school in a couple of weeks with no teacher. So, we don't have a teacher, but we're going to spend a hundred and forty million dollars on a school right now?
No.
Well, you're talking two different budgets.
We're talking two different budgets and two different time periods.
We're talking, we can't, we can't afford our budget. We can't, we can't afford our budget, we can't afford to, to maintain and operate, but we're going to spend 140 million dollars? And we're going to have a really nice school with no teachers? We have to think of what we-
The operating budget is a completely different issue and a completely different set of failures, frankly, but-
Different, different taxpayers pay the, pay for, pay for it? I don't understand.
It's not a different, it's, it's-
We, we need to educate the kids.
We also need to educate the taxpayers.
Yeah. I think they're getting, forgetting the good education.
The fact is that, well, okay, so this is one of the poorest towns in the state. Why is that? One of the reasons that the poorest town in the state is for more than 30 years, this town has not invested in itself. If you don't invest it in yourself, you're pointing yourself downhill. If you refuse to invest in yourself, it's just going to get worse. That's history. That's, that's easy to document.
In the past 12 years, we built two new schools, so, or 20 years, we built two new schools.
No, no, we haven't built new two schools. The state built one, they gave us, to us virtually for free.
We built two schools. We built the middle school and we built boroughs. So we built two schools.
The middle school is 20 years old.
Yeah, we built it. So we have invested in, in the town. I don't think it's a matter of that.
Almost 22 years old.
Best, best case scenario, this, I, I agree, we have to wait to see what the state says, but best, best case scenario, the state can max out 112 million, which was already voted on by the, by the taxpayers. So they're pretty much, that's what we, we could spend. That still means we've got to cut 13 million or more out of this project, which I'm hearing is probably not possible, based on the needs and the renovation and everything else.
Mark, if I could interject, is if, and, and again, I'd like to make a very, very clear distinction. And, and I made this clear to the town council when I agreed to become a member of the building committee, is that the building committee would not be involved in generating the ed spec, that we would build to the ed spec. So if, if, if there, and again, maybe I wasn't clear, I, I actually think there's a path forward to an acceptable budget that the community will buy into, and that might require the ed spec to be modified. And, but here, here's my point, I'm not going to suggest that we stop here and go away, you guys go talk about an ed spec. My outlook is, let's go, go back to the state, show them what our ed spec, because the state hasn't seen the ed spec yet. Let the state review the ed spec, let the state review the plans, and then give us feedback. And if they come back and say, hey, that ed spec looks pretty good, we're going to give you X amount of money, and that still is above the 112 or whatever the community is willing to embrace, and we have to fine tune or adjust the ed spec, I think that's definitely an option. I, I don't think we're going to go from 123 to 79. But if there's, if there's changes to be made on the ed spec with the board of ed and the administration's involvement, I'm sure there, and keep in mind, there's, there's at least a 10% contingency, and that's not a small amount of money. So I don't want to be, I don't want to be at all negative about this, I'm quite frankly, I'm, I'm excited, I think we're close, we've got some work to do. And before I lose any sleep over it, I'm going to go talk to the state, and I'm hoping immediately after that, we're back here with, with some information from the state, and that every one of the build, the board of ed members thinks about what's important in the ed spec, and if there's opportunities to make changes there.
I, I would agree with, as soon as I saw the initial report come out in last week's paper, my, my communication with the chairman, with Ms. Ms. Eyes, was, we need to have a joint meeting, I think, and you were involved in that.
Yeah, I completely agree.
And so I would certainly agree, we need to have a joint meeting of the building committee and the, and the board of ed to get, get the trains back on some, some track. I'm just, I'm very skeptical of where it's going. Maybe we just need to blow it up, build new, but I'll let that go.
Ms. Lambert?
Just kind of building on what you said earlier, that there's a lot of code enforcement, there's a lot of abatement, there's a lot of stuff like that that has to happen in this building. And we can certainly say, you know, we can't afford it right now, we're going to break it up over the next 20 years, but we get zero reimbursement for small projects like that. If we do the floors, if we do abatement, if we do stuff like that, there might be some small amounts of deep money out there, none of which is guaranteed, but we get zero reimbursement from the state for small renovations. If we do it as a big project, either build a new school or renovate as new, this is something that we discussed, Mr. Kalajian's sitting here, he discussed it when he was chair of this committee, we've been beating this around for a while, what if we break it up into smaller projects and don't do a renovate as new, and just take smaller bites of the apple? That's fine, but it's going to cost us nearly the same amount with no reimbursement over the next 15 or 20 years for things that have to be done. Dr. Garcia alluded in the ed specs, or somebody alluded in the ed specs about a study that was done last year about the handicap accessibility of this building, and there are some very significant issues that were highlighted in there that we're going to have to deal with sooner rather than later. And those projects alone could take up a huge chunk of money with zero reimbursement. So fiduciarily, the building committee, the school planning and design committee, not the high school renovation committee, school planning and design committee in developing all of this, looked at what happens if we break it up into smaller projects and do it over a longer period of time. And financially for the town, that was the most expensive way of doing it.
I have a question. Let's say the state says yes, okay, and it goes with the 1, 123. What's the percentage, the maximum that the state would reimburse?
79.6%.
79, 80%?
Yeah.
So the town would be what, about 35, 40 millions?
That's-
If the town says yes?
I think that the, if you recall the original 112 million dollar proposal, called for 64 million from the state and 40, it was over 40 million from the town.
It was more from the state.
If, if, I'd like to caution folks-
68 and 43, I think.
-from doing that calculation, as I was reprimanded by our design team recently, you can't, you can't take an expected reimbursement and apply it to the bottom line, because there are elements of the project that are not eligible at all.
Yeah, for reimbursement.
And, and again, one of the reasons, and I've, I've tried, and I would encourage everybody else to try to avoid second guessing the state at this point, because, and, and I fully appreciate, I've done that calculation as well. But I, I think it's important that, before we engage in any in-depth discussions, that we have some feedback, so that we have some sense.
But my point is that if, if you want to talk about what the town said they could afford, the, the voters essentially committed the town, not the state, but the town, to up to 43 million dollars. Now, Mr. DeSantis may be right, people may think differently about that number than they did three years ago, but that's basically what got voted for at the time. And Ms. Lambert is also correct that if we don't do this, we're going to spend a lot of money other ways that we won't have to spend if we do do this. And in fact, if I recall, Mr. Kalajian at the time talking about the ed spec, was that the operating cost of this renovated building will be less than the operating cost of the existing building. And that, that will defray some of the cost of paying for the bonding that the building will have to repay. We'll end up spending less on operating, and that means more tax money available to pay for bonds, technically. I mean, I know the cost of everything goes up, so, you know, it'll get lost in the pay raises for the teachers and the, and the increases in healthcare costs, but nevertheless, if we don't do it, it's going to cost us more money than we think. So yes, please do talk to the state. I, I have a feeling the state will not be unreasonable. They may not spring for 124 million dollars, but I don't think they'll be unreasonable.
They don't have any money right now, so.
Well, yeah, no, they did have a bonding pool when they started out with this thing, and that's, and that's still been appropriated, that's still there somewhere. It's, it's shared with a lot of other projects, and that's their problem, is they're, they're basically doing what's called the knapsack problem by operations researchers. There's a pile of money and a whole bunch of things that have to be paid for out of it.
Okay, I'll report back as soon as we have more information from the state. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, boy.
Okay. Now, the last item on the agenda at this point, before we get to the possibility of a, um, executive session, is the, um, the, 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 what, wait a minute. We got, before we get to action items, I missed the second page. The renovation of the Wyndham High School pool, where are we with that? The pool, the pool wasn't deep enough, as I understand it.
So this item is up for discussion, and this item is also up for, for approval. I do have it on both items, discussion and approval, because we go into the state on Wednesday, Mr. Pelman will need a response to that. A study was conducted by T L B Architecture and provided Mr. Collier with four options for the pool.
Mr. Pelman.
Mr. Pelman, I said, Mr. Pelman, I said, Mr. Pelman. You have Mr. Pelman here tonight, and you have Mr. Roach here tonight, and yesterday, the high school administrative team, Mr. Pelman, Mr. Crowe, Mr. Roach, Mr. Callahan and I, we met to go over the four options, and I think, Mr. Pelman, we share with you the option that we, that the group think is, is the best, and based on their recommendation of experts in the field for, for the pool. The pool has some issues, of course, it's an old pool also, so.
Okay, well, you know, good evening again, I'm Scott Pelman from Collier, as your owner's project manager. So, you know, I just want to make it clear, I'm, I'm not a pool specialist, you know, we have the report here-
Yeah.
-from the consultant that, that Bob Roach and Friar Architecture hired to help guide us through this process. And, and really what's driving, there was, there was four options that the design team came up with and that we looked at with the construction managers from a pricing standpoint. And we met, actually, yesterday with Dr. Garcia and her administration to talk about those options, and to talk about academically how the pool is utilized, and what would be the best approach moving forward, both from an academic standpoint and certainly a fiscal standpoint. One interesting thing, you know, as Michael just alluded to, there are certain things where the state money does not reimburse you at all. One of those things is pools. So we have to be very cognizant about how much money we're spending on the pool, because all of that money is taxpayer money. You're not getting any reimbursement from the state on any pool renovations. There was a few major factors within your existing pool from a code standpoint. The walkway on the eastern side of the pool is, is too narrow, it does not meet the current codes. As part of a renovate as new process, we have to bring the entire building up to, up to code, you know, so, so we've got to look at all the codes, and, and so we're, we're bound to that. One of the other issues that's a code violation is the bleachers are actually on the west side. So when the public comes in, they actually walk across the pool surface, it's actually, the bleacher areas are supposed to be separated by code from the pool area itself. So again, another code violation. And then the third is that the depth of the pool for diving is no longer compliant to the, the code recommended depth for, for looking at the pool. As you can imagine, that scenario is, is quite expensive. The, the study did explore, could you just bring the entire deck of the pool up? Well, you also don't have enough height in the roof between your existing pool in, in the roof structure, if you brought it up, you don't have enough clear height above to go into a deeper pool. So the only option was to go down. And, and the construction management team looked at that and the costs associated with that. Those were discussed, and we understand that currently, there's only two students that we believe are participating in the diving program right now. And I think from that standpoint, there's structural concerns, you know, we may get into the existing pool, we have drawings of how it was built, but we're not confident that once you start excavating down underneath that existing pool, that you're not going to open up Pandora's box, get into undermining of footings and other things, and then the contingency that Michael talked about that we're carrying for the project, all of a sudden, we start spending that contingency, those contingency dollars. So there was, there was two options really to solve the, the width of the walkway and the spectator seating area to solve those. One was to make the pool a little bit thinner, so we could extend that, that walkway and that surface out. The second was to put in addition on the outside of the building. There are some structural concerns with that, it certainly is a more expensive option. And the, the current width of the pool also is, is, was noted in the report that it currently, it's, it's striped as a six-lane pool, but the C I A C recommends a seven-foot lane with an extra one and a half foot on each side of the outside lane. Right now, you have a 36-foot wide pool, you have six lanes. So right off the bat, that's only six feet per lane, plus you don't even have the extra width on the side, so the, the outside swimmers are put at a significant disadvantage when swimming in any meet.
Can I just ask a quick question?
Sure.
I'm a little confused, by code violations, are you talking about a, a structural code that, that it, a building code, or are these C I A swimming rules?
Health, health codes. As far, as far as the width of the, the walkway and separation of public from the pool and keeping them off that surface so it doesn't get contaminated.
That's, but the lane, the, the interior-
The lane width is more C I A C, yes, recommendation.
What I'm thinking is, is if we got rid of, if we stopped competitive swimming, would that reduce the number of opt, of, of things we have to do here?
No, it just, it's just, the, the, looking at the two options, if we put in what's called a Mirtha insert into it, so it's, it's a stainless steel insert you put in the pool, which would narrow it down, allow us to fill in the sides, and to solve our code-related issues, you could get a pool with four competitive lanes that would meet all the requirements. Our understanding from the pool consultant, and we're looking into this a little bit further, is as long as both teams agreed, you'd have to run a few extra heats, you couldn't run a state meet or a championship meet, those require six lanes. But again, your pool isn't wide enough, you'd have to have a 45-
You can't do that anyway.
-pool, so you can't do it anyway. You know, the, the second option, option two, was to put in addition on the outside, you'd still have to, to do a, a little bit of work, but you need to come up with five almost compliant lanes. They wouldn't, they wouldn't meet the cut. If you're really going to be compliant, even with your existing pool not shortened up, the only way to have compliant lanes, you'd have four. You'd have five that would be about six and a half feet wide. So again, you'd have to get the teams to agree, to say, yes, you know, we'll, we'll agree to a, a thinner lane, and we'll go forward with that. So with the discussions with Dr. Garcia and her staff, and I, and I believe you may have gotten the, the four options, there's some graphics here, the decision was to go with option 1A, which would eliminate the diving program, because we're not going to go through the expense of digging down, and the potential risk of digging the pool down. We will maintain the, the deep side of the pool, so life-saving classes could still take place. The Mirtha pool insert would give us four lanes that would meet all the requirements for competitive lanes. It would also, from a structural standpoint and longevity, instead of just relying again on your 50-year-old pool width, you're coming in with a brand-new pool structure that theoretically should last quite a bit of time. So you're actually improving the longevity of the overall pool, coming in with four compliant lanes, solving your code-related issues, and it was the cheapest option. So that, what was the recommendation from the administration to Dr. Garcia, to our team here. So currently, the budget numbers that were presented this evening include that option.
Just to let people know, this kind of dovetails on our previous conversation, when people look at the numbers for the high school renovation, we've kept in mind, what's the least expensive option, and what's the least invasive option when we're doing projects like this, you know? Ultimately, we want the diving program and the life-saving program, and to be able to have a state competition here, which would bring people to the town, and people, you know, shopping at our shops and eating at our local restaurants and stuff like that, like we do with wrestling meets and stuff like that. But at almost two, almost a million dollars more expensive, that's clearly not an option for a project that's already with construction costs and stuff like that gone over where we'd like it to be.
And actually, it's, it's still not an option with these four. If, if you were going to have a, one where you could have a state meet, we didn't even price that out, you would in essence have to build a brand-new pool.
Right, but what I'm saying is, the building committee's kept that in mind in this discussion.
Right, so it's, it's, it's far significant above and beyond anything that's in these four options.
The, the plan is to build a pool in the community center, perhaps we can actually get a pool in the community center that would meet the specs for a competitive event.
The one they're planning in the pool won't, we've already looked into that.
Okay, well, hey, most high schools don't have a pool at all.
Right, right, well, and that's the other thing is that-
We'll at least have the ability to have some swimming meets in a pool, and, and do life-saving, and actually-
With this option, you can't do life-saving?
Yes, yes, you can.
You can?
Yeah, it maintains the depth of the pool.
Oh, okay.
Yes, it does. That was, that was something, because it's part of your curriculum, and we discussed, and we felt that was relevant.
Since we have some students already with summer jobs working as lifesavers, because they were able to get their life-saving certification in the pool here, that's, this is actually an asset to our students.
If I can finish, and that we have other schools, Coventry, Lyman, and Ram, that co-op with our teams to have their swimmers swim here, and I'm assuming there's a fee associated with that for the schools.
They do pay for that, yeah.
I'm sure it's not, you know, onerous or anything like that, but we'd lose that ability to have not only these swim teams- But we'd lose that ability to have not only these swim teams, but to work with these other school districts as well.
I'm under the impression we only have one swim team now.
Girls and boys.
I'm under the impression the girls is, is not, is still operating, is it?
The girls' team is still operating.
Not the full girls' team and boys' team?
Yes.
Yeah, girls is Lyman, Wyndham.
Lyman, Wyndham, and they're in the fall. And the boys are Wyndham, Ram, Coventry, and they're in the winter. So there are girls, Kelly, who is here from the girls' team.
Okay, so Kelly, we are, we are feeling the girls' team as well?
Any girl that want to come out for girls' swimming meets?
How many girls do we have last semester?
We had one. One Wyndham.
You know, these things sort of swing. We're talking 40 years here though, so, you know, so maintaining the pool and having, having it available, it may not be as popular now when you say it's for very, very, you know, only one or two students. But 10 years from now, 15 years from now, if we have an attractive renovated high school, we may draw enthusiasm for a wider variety of sports that are presently offering. I, I don't see any reason why we'd want to close the door to that.
Are we voting tonight?
It's on your action items.
Your actions, but not right now, right now.
It's under action item.
Do we have an action item on the pool?
I thought this was part, this was going to be part of the renovate.
The ed specs say that we will have diving and swimming. And so we have to agree to accept this pool change.
Modification.
Modification, right.
Yeah.
Include in the renovation specs.
So that we'd be removing diving from the ed specs.
So as a board, we have to accept this. Otherwise, the building committee could just say, you know, we're getting rid of diving and that's the end of it. So as a board, we have to, because our ed spec stated we would have diving, as a board, we have to vote to accept it without the diving. Correct?
Sure.
Are you here tonight?
That's correct, Mrs. Lambert. And just to go back to your earlier point about the cost. Cost was not the primary factor in our discussions with the administration. We talked to them, we talked through their needs, we talked about diving and then showed them the options. And we quickly eliminated the two of the four options, which, as Mr. Pelman said, included those costs and efforts to make the diving work within the pool. So it was a, it was a byproduct of talking.
But as a building committee, we talked about costs and expense. As a high school renovation committee, we talked about costs and expenses.
Absolutely, absolutely.
I was talking about it, sorry, from a building committee standpoint, my other hat, but just making people aware that the building committee is aware of what these changes are entailing.
I have a question. So this 1A cost is included in this?
Correct.
1A?
Yes.
So why talk about the 2B?
How far we have to?
You have to see all the options.
They look at the options.
That's increasing.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
More discussion?
What if we, what if we give the town, the high school to run, to use it as a community center, a senior center, and we'll build a new high school?
We actually, once upon a time, did, did look at.
I think it would be cheaper.
You know, the opportunities for greater community use of the building. And, and there are a number of difficulties because of the ages of the schoolchildren and the control of the space.
I'm suggesting we just give the town the building and then we build a new building. There won't be any conflict.
You know, we looked at that too. And that, that actually costs more.
Can't imagine.
No, it costs less to build a new building. I don't want misinformation out there. It costs less to build a new building, but we don't get a cafeteria and an auditorium and two gyms and a pool. And even if we're willing to give up a pool, we still lose the two gyms and/or the auditorium because we only get two of those three spaces. We wanted to maximize.
And you still have to do the early childhood and the board of ed offices. So by the time you get done.
Let me finish. And then we lose the spaces, plus we still don't have a space for early childhood and board of ed offices, although we could reconfigure other buildings, but then we have to put those construction projects ahead of the high school and it became a bigger disaster. And we had N I S C accreditation looming and we were concerned about it not being accredited.
Can I interrupt? Can we move on, please?
Okay.
Really?
Yeah.
This is really important, not just.
Well, we do have, we do have, we do have an action item and we can, we.
I know.
So if we really want to talk about this thing from a cost point of view, that's the place to talk about it. All right, so let's, let's go to the action items and.
So you have an action item and the first one that we have on the action item is the M and J contract, the set of background information. The last board meeting in July 10, you had two proposals for M and J. Your suggested proposal B, so I'm bringing it back to you as an action item. So we recommended that the board approve the contract with M and J for the years 2019, 20 to 23. 2023.
Okay, so they're going to have a motion on the floor and then we'll have a discussion?
I move we accept the M and J option B.
Second.
All right, discussion?
How? It's a $225,000 increase over what we have budgeted?
Over five years, over five years.
No, 1920. It's a $225,000 decrease or increase? Decrease over what we had budgeted or $332,000 increase?
Is an increase. That's an increase, right Rita? It's an increase. Yeah, it's an increase.
Not over what we had budgeted.
No, not over what we budgeted.
An increase over what we're spending now. Let me go back and look at the numbers. Ms. Colucci?
Does this take into account? Oh. Are we waiting for that answer? That's okay. I think it's on page 27 of the packet.
It's 106.
A $106,000 increase.
Over, over this, over the 18, 19?
Right.
Well, we're increasing, we're increasing the number of buses and we're increasing the size of the buses. So we're increasing, we, we're increasing the number of buses and we're increasing from 47 to, to, it's 72.
41?
Forty, I think it's 47, the type two to type one.
So my comment or question was, does this, we persistently seem to under-budget the buses and the transportation, so will this alleviate that problem?
So it'll make us more over-budgeted?
Well, we're going to have to go back, we're going to have to go back and look at the budget in its entirety, all right? First step is to take what we did in March, adjust it down, and then go back and look at issues like, okay, now that we've got a bus contract, what's it really costing us? And, and that's what needs to be in the budget.
Well, exactly.
And then, and then we have to see where else it squeezes the budget in other places, but yes. So, so the, the idea going forward is that we budget what we expect to actually pay. Yes. And that's not what's in the budget at the moment.
But it's in this contract or not?
It would be, yes.
If we approve this contract tonight, we're agreeing to spend $106,000 more.
We budgeted 3% increase for, for the transportation for this year. And I think this, I don't have the percent increases, a 3.5 or a 4%. Rita, do you remember? 4%, so we, we're right in line. We budgeted in the budget at 3%.
This is a whole nother percentage point, which is a decent amount of increase that we're not sure where we're going to find it from.
Well, I do want to say that we started out at 18% increase and we negotiated up to 4%.
Right, no, I'm aware of that. And I'm not questioning, I'm concerned now, we are authorizing spending for this and we don't know where that spending's coming from. And this has been part of the, the problem that some of us have complained about in the past is that spending gets authorized and we don't know where it's coming from and we just assume that it gets made up somewhere in the budget. Where I would like, and we authorize stuff and then later on, we get the budget transferred. I'd like to know exactly where it's coming from before we continue to approve expenditures.
So we put out this for bid, and we put on an R Q for bid, and we budgeted, of course, because the budget is done so early on, we put in 3%, but none of the bid came in for 3%.
Right, no, I, I totally get that you guys have talked them down from. However, when I am buying my groceries every month, I know that, you know, okay, I'm having a dinner party and I need an extra $100 for whatever, I have to know where that comes from. I can't just go ahead and spend it and hope that it appears in my paycheck. It doesn't work that way. So I have to, we have to know where this spending is coming from before we continue to authorize it. Because next month, it'll be a retroactive budget transfer and that makes us one less transparent and makes us more ineffective.
But, and you know, and you know, have total confidence in Rita and she has worked very hard and when you brought it to the proceed, a budget is a, is a, is a projection. And so we, we monitor the budget very closely. And I think Rita, we've been doing that very, very, very closely. So we're going to monitor that. But we, this is the best that we could do, 4% from 18%.
Mr. DeSantis?
So I'm very concerned with, you know, with the money, of course, but a bigger concern when, when, when this was being negotiated, was there any talk of the, the quality of the buses that Wyndham is getting and?
Yeah, yes, sir.
And that's going to improve?
Not only that, the services, for example, we're working in, making sure that the cameras are on the bus. And if they don't, the cameras are not working, there's a penalty.
Okay.
Per day when the cameras are not working. We also working to make sure that the parents have the app to see where the buses are, that they can monitor if the buses are coming late or, or not late. We're working in training for the bus driver and how to respond to parents. So there's lots of things that this contract will include, not only the number, but to improve the quality of the services out to the district.
And, and we're going to hold them to that?
We're going to hold them to that. By the way, I, I, I don't know if you guys knew, last year, I hold them to, to the tardiness of the buses. I had a school, Nert Wyndham, that the buses were extremely late and I think Nachak. And in the contract said that for every time that they're late, they could be penalized $250, $250 per day. And we have never done that. And so last year, I hold them, for every day that they were late at Nert Wyndham and Nachak, I deducted that $250,000, $250. And then we distributed to the teachers that were out there when the buses still late. So I did do that last year. And the money went straight to the teachers that were beyond their working hours waiting for the buses.
Okay, but to be fair, the GPS system we're paying for, the bus company isn't paying for because it's in our budget transfers.
Yeah, we, we pay for that, right.
So they're not providing that in their contract. They might be agreeing to install it in their bus. But we're adding that to our transportation expenses.
The same way that we pay for the, for the gas and the diesel, they don't pay for that.
Yeah, I mean, I, my, my main concern was, you know, the bus, the breakdown in the safety. I know my daughter was on the Mass Pike twice on their buses and had to get out and transfer all onto another bus. And we, we do get the other towns' buses when they're, when they put them out of service, they come to Wyndham.
So, so one of the things that we're discussing is that, you know, we can't penalize them for the first time the bus is broken because anything can happen. But we do, but, but second and third time that a bus is broken, they should be penalized for that.
Right, well, I mean, when we're getting, we're getting buses from other towns that are put out of service and they're coming to Wyndham, I think we should be penalizing them every time they break down. Because they're, I mean, you know, they're not, this isn't like, you know, a new car failure. This is something that they've band-aided and they're trying to push out.
So I didn't negotiate the first contract. The first contract was in place, this is not the first contract. M and J been with us since, I believe, 1978. That's what they've been with us, that's what I was told. But, but this time is my first time negotiating with them and I can assure you that this was a very strong negotiation. They just didn't bring us a contract and say, here it is. This time, we spent months saying, no, no, no. We spent months, actually Rita and I, Rita and I negotiated this contract. So we spent months with them.
I understand we're coming up against, you know, school starting and we don't have a contract right now, but when will we find out as a board where the money's coming from for the extra 1%?
Well, we'd have to go back to the budget. I can bring that to, I would have to go back to, well, the, the proposed 1920 that has not been approved. That's what I have to go and say, okay, here is where we could look at that. I'm not going to do that, I can't do that tomorrow, but maybe next week.
Okay, so have any other discussion? So are you ready to vote on the motion? Motion is to approve version B of the proposed bus contract. All of us in favor? Two, three, four, five, opposed. Two, all right, motion passes, 5-2. Okay. Oh, we're to top of this thing. All right, so the next, action item on the agenda is to, all right, now we're back to authorizing the renovation of the Wyndham High School pool. Revision as proposed 1A.
1A.
So I'll entertain a motion.
I'm moved.
Okay. Move by Ms. Lambert, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. Torado. All right. Now this, this is implicitly a revision in the ed specs as well as the approval of the budget for the pool, correct?
It's an approval of the proposed budget for the pool. Anything could change. I mean, you know, they could start.
Yeah, but this, this proposed budget eliminates the possibility of diving.
Correct.
And that is, that, and that, and that would mean that this is going to remove diving from the ed specs.
I'm not, I'm not sure we're, we're not approving any budget as a board of ed. We are approving the renovations too, which eliminates diving. It has no monetary, as far as this board is concerned, it has no monetary.
So at this point, at this point, we don't have to touch the ed specs, but we should understand that we probably will get there.
We'll, we'll have no diving in the ed specs going forward. We are essentially eliminating diving from the ed specs.
We are touching the ed specs. That's what we're doing.
That's, that's, all right.
We're approving a change to the ed specs in this renovation to the pool.
Okay, that's what we're doing. All right, all right.
We have no fiduciary.
Okay, so there's no, there's no dollar amount assigned to this. This is basically a change in the ed specs.
You're not held responsible.
It's already.
It's included in your, in your total.
Included in the budget, it's already there.
Got it.
But when you're dealing with a big project like this, it could change. It could be a little more or a little less. We don't know exactly what this number will come. This is the proposed number with the information they have right now.
Yeah, but in effect, well, we're doing two things here. We're, we're eliminating the diving program and we're going with a four-lane pool.
Correct.
Okay, any other discussion? So if you're ready to vote, all in favor? That's all right, six opposed. Six to one, passes. Okay. Next item on the agenda, entertain a motion to approve the budget transfers. This is for the, this year's 1920 budget, small number of budget transfers, which basically are just corrections in the, within the budget, right? Putting things on the correct.
Line item.
Line items. So can I have a motion to approve the transfers? Now we're doing it before they've been done? These transfers?
All of these are post-dated. All of these, the last one is dated 7/31. That's what I got. That's what I received, the request.
They haven't been counted munis.
They haven't actually been entered, they haven't actually been entered munis.
And again, just, these aren't actual, we're not actually changing money for cover expenses. We're just putting, reassigning them to the different line item.
Yeah, to the correct line item. The line item they probably should have been assigned to in the first place. Still, like, I need a motion here at this.
Make a motion.
Second.
Okay, all right, now. Any other, any questions?
What are emergency purchases for food service fund? I'm assuming it's more than we run out of tomatoes. Is it like if a machinery breaks down?
Yeah, it's, it's to use the credit card if they have an emergency, like something breaks.
Yes.
Anything else? All right, if we're ready to vote, all in favor? Okay, that's unanimous, thank you. Okay. Last action item is a recommendation to approve acceptance of a donation of backpacks from Verizon Corporation.
Sweet.
So moved?
Second.
Definitely.
Are we ever going to turn down a donation?
No discussion, they bring it on.[1728.01]
Any, any, any discussion?
How are they going to be distributed? It says a portion will be held back. How are the rest of them going to be distributed?
So this is distributed during the barbecue that we have on the 23rd. The kids come with their family. They receive the home liaison's work and the community engagement office work to make sure that parents get, sign in and get a little card and get their backpack. And some of them are retained, a small number for kids that come during the school year, beginning of school year that have not attended the barbecue.
First come, first served.
First come, first served. And we do get a lot of people. Last year, I think we had about 400, 400 people that attended.
Supplies are limited?
Well, we have 500 this year.
Oh, 500, that's good.
Yeah, yeah.
And I know there's been a community engagement in getting people to donate school supplies and backpacks and stuff like that. Are these backpacks distributed only to residents or are they distributed to anybody who shows up?
They're distributed to Wyndham public school students.
Okay. All right, any other discussion? Okay. So if we're ready to vote, all in favor?
We'll take it.
That's unanimous. Thank you. Okay.
Okay.
That takes care of the, all right. So the last thing on the agenda is a proposed executive session. We're discussing documents pertaining to personnel issues. As the superintendent said, this has to do with the organization of the central office. And those are the only personnel issues that we'll include in this.
So I make a motion to go into executive session for discussion of exempt documents pertaining to personnel matters referring to central office.
Okay. All in favor? Okay, thank you. That's unanimous. Take a five-minute break to...